All right, I'm starting a recording.
Good evening. Good afternoon, sir. That's good. That's four. Okay.
How you doing?
Good.
I am.
We need to have two separate votes.
Oh, absolutely. Almighty, Kevin.
Next year.
It's on. You might have to turn on now.
The dose is five.
He's on his way.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He had some other business to tend to up on the off end.
Oh, okay.
Then I got a little bit of an argument that I want.
Just have to do it up here.
Yep.
I was told that selecting called committee dollars would be something.
Well, I guess we gotta.
Okay.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of our nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, I suggest that we turn the meeting over to call in to see where we can get from my.
Okay. Me, I'm gonna turn it over to you, sir.
Okay. So my understanding is that everybody's had an opportunity to review the, on the board of selectmen, that is, had an opportunity to review the capital budgets. My second understanding was that tonight we are gonna revisit that and see what of these items the selectmen either approve or disapprove of in whole and what items that they wish to look to the fund balance policy reserve versus town meeting commitment or potentially other reserve accounts. As a, as just a point of reference, all of the total capital requests this year totaled $781,000. In total, $557,100 would be, is being recommended by the manager to come from fund balance reserve, $16,676 from fire equipment reserve, $7,500 from recreational building reserve, and that leaves $200,000 for commitment town meeting. So if you'd like, do we wanna just start at the top and go through each individual department and go from there? Is that working? So the first one is the, I labeled it as general capital because that's one that doesn't necessarily fit into any specific department. The only thing on this general capital is $5,000 for cemetery, the cemetery maintenance reserve, the 9739 stone cleaning and repair account. And that's based on selectmen comments from the last meeting that we should be putting some money aside to pay for the cemetery, you know, maintenance and so forth. My recommendation would be that that money be raised at town meeting and placed into that 9739 account.
Anybody with a favor?
I am. That's what the committee has wanted to do. We've been able to go from cemetery to cemetery meeting and cares and of the stones and cleaning every year by having money because for many years there was no money put in there, so I do support them.
Can I just ask a question about, is there something new from what we had last week?
That was something that was discussed last week, so it is new, yes. Yeah. But it's in that pack, I thought I just passed out.
Right, you put it on the.
It's on the.
$5,000. I would like that motion. Put it on.
Okay.
Give me a second. Go ahead and do the fight, is that what you're saying?
Okay.
Does anything sit down? We just started. Motion, second to put the $5,000 through cemetery onto the commitment and not on that. That's the current motion. Got you, Brad. Do we have a course to the side on if you said?
We did.
Yep. Oh, wait, came out? Can you let further discussion? Not on paper.
So next is the transfer recycling center. The capital request we have from the transfer station, $100,000 to replace the loader, $4,500 to replace heat pump, $7,500 for cement repair, that's the demo retaining wall, replacement of three of the overhead doors, two at the transfer station, one at the recycle center, that's $15,000. And then painting of the buildings, which is $20,000. So that's a total of $147,000. On the budget sheet, it's we're recommending fund balance reserve to fund these items. I know a couple of these are open for, you know, up for discussion, of course. I have asked Ed to come in case we have direct questions for him. Would you wanna come here in case he had a question for you, Ed, please?
I have a question. Didn't you appropriate someone last year for paying the buildings?
There was, we talked about it.
We did.
Go ahead.
It come out of your fund balance, but then it come to find out that we only paid, I was only put out the bit, but the front of the buildings and off the back, and they pulled it back, so we didn't.
Ultimately, we didn't move forward with funding.
Right.
I'm sorry, did I miss something there? Ed, what did you just say?
Last, last year, we tried to put money up to paint the buildings, and there wasn't enough money in it to do the whole project, so they, they pulled back and we.
Oh, on, on the painting?
Right.
Oh, okay.
I think it was there, I think we didn't have the quote right.
Right, because I, I only put out for the front of the buildings, not the, not all the way around. There wasn't enough money to do it.
Three versus four sides.
Yeah, I recall.
So in here, you do have the quotes for the loader and heat pump and so forth. Did you, so, I don't know if we wanna start at the bottom with the small stuff first, painting of the buildings and those smaller items, and then talk about the loader, or what are your thoughts?
What did the loader take a turn to the word? How long did it been? And who's had it?
Few months.
You was, you was there, oh, you were, all right? And now, now you turn the steering wheel to the left and you go to the right, so I got Mike coming to look at it tomorrow, but he thinks it's in the steering as far as the washes or something. He said you had the O-rings and all this dotted up. I mean, we just keep dumping money into it and dumping money into it, man. I think it's time for it to go away, but. Last year, the Alx has $30,000 trade-in, I don't think we paid much for it. When we bought it the first time, they gave us a heck of a deal on it. It's a 2002, so you've got 20, 20 years in it.
The king. Have we made, since last year, we made any attempts to possibly find a used one? Not saying that that's the route we wanna take, but I think we should probably at least.
I have not looked for a used one, no.
I thought the deal was that we were gonna wait until the highway department needed one and. Put the new one in the highway department and put the used one into the pantry.
I know that that's been commented on, along the way.
Why would you create it?
I mean, I certainly, I certainly think that would work. I know that Ed has expressed some concerns for the size.
But I thought we pretty much ruled that out the day we were there.
That's right.
Huh?
We, we did.
Did we ever change anything about putting the trailer underneath so you didn't need the loader to go over the side?
Trail up underneath.
Well, like, we got that one.
No, we did not, we did not change that because I talked to the other guys, they said that's never happened before, and all that was was a hundred yard container that Almighty brought in and we filled it for them when it was in the building. That was the only time we ever used that wall that they put in down there.
I think the deputy.
The two guys worked there for 27 years, I hope they know what they thought about that. Maybe Bob might have done something, but not, not as far as the town of Oxford. I mean, Brian's been there since the, since the town took it over, and Bert has too, and it's never been that way.
I can't wait to.
Bob wasn't running it when it was in it, but I mean, why would you, if you could take something you could back up to and throw it into it versus throwing it on the ground, beating it up of a loader that ain't made to load demo anyways, so you can pick it up over the side, does that make any sense?
Well, it's just, it's a 50 yard containers, that's what they're made for, but the demo containers.
I don't think the loader's made to handle a demo.
The nissens. I don't know, it was a 910 before, it was, or the highway department went to down. That's what they always done.
I mean, I don't know what you done, I'm just saying going forward, it wouldn't make sense to look in that. I thought we were gonna look into it.
No, the, the safety, that's another thing. Work, what is that, work?
Safety works.
Safety works come, and that's not even in the, in the plan for them, because people fall into thing, they had one down in, I think they told me down in Cape Elizabeth or something, guy got pushed into the hopper and all that, so. They need to look in it further than that. There was already about the little hole that we, we fill the rubbish in, it's too big. Anyone just put cement blocks on that and make the hole smaller.
Well, I mean, if you put a, you know, pipe or something, somebody back up to, I don't know what I am. I don't know why that's any different than dumping it in your office.
The hopper is a lot hated.
I don't think it would take a lot of water to make a gate around that.
Put guardrail up or something, you know?
I know. Go to, they work. People pull up and they got cable, go in the little post and cable, so people can't go over there. They throw everything over. So I wonder why we couldn't do something better. I don't know why. You don't have to clean it open. I think when we discussed it last year, that it was, we talked about putting cave, uh, posted and cabling it up, so people can't fall down on the bank, but nothing was done.
And then you'll have to do something else with the ground, because it's all sand down there, and we'll even get a truck in there to get it out, get your.
Down below?
Yeah. Kinda, there's some type of cement pad for that to set on.
I think we talked about that too, putting in a cement pad.
Gonna have to, I mean, the truck, never, you never get it out once you're gonna fall.
But nothing has ever fallen through on it.
Yeah, at least looking at that, but we don't look for them.
Yes.
Could I make a comment? I worked for Town of Poland for 11 years, and we had what you're talking about, several different places. And for 11 years, they never had anybody fall into one. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but there was a curb so that, there was a curb about so high, but I mean, you could make it a little higher, whatever, just so that stuff could be put in there, be a lot easier, and, uh, my theory would be, I think I'd agree with Floyd, why handle it three, two or three times if you can handle it once or maybe twice at the moment? But it didn't seem to work, and as I say, I was there for 11 years.
And I'm familiar with that same setup.
So if we're just gonna throw it in the dumpsters, that means you wanna be adding some more money to the dumpster fee, because we're gonna be hauling a lot more often. The thing will be squished.
We gave quite a bit to it for the price of all of it, couldn't we?
Not really, no.
Oh?
You can take the loader backwards if you want, Floyd, I mean, I don't pay it, but I'm just telling you that it's been on the capital improvement for four years, and it just keeps getting butted back and butted back and butted back. The, the, the transfer section takes in revenue. I mean, ain't like it's costing you that, that big bundle, why don't we finance it for five years? Instead of coming up with a big chunk, we, we had it all voted in last year, and we could get zero percent finance, because nobody told me they wanted zero percent finance when we started, and then the loader comes back and we can't have it. I mean, we are, we're a department in the town too.
He's.
Well, I'm just saying though, I, we need things too. And you just keep kicking it off and kicking it off and kicking it off.
Open to that, if anybody wants to.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's what all I'm saying, is you keep kicking it back, kicking it back, kicking it back. Soon as, this thing's gonna die, and then we're gonna be sitting, no way.
So, I'll weigh in. If it died, that's when we should be going to fund balance for $100,000. Other than that, I do think for something that large or expensive, we should be budgeting for it and not looking to pull it out of capital or out of fund balances all at once. Not saying that we don't need a new loader. I know we all went down when you brought the highway department's load over, and I think it showed everybody that that loader would work for what we do down there. Then there's the discussion of if and what we do buy, new loader, is it gonna go to the transfer station, or is it gonna go to the highway department, or it's gonna be a used boat, more like it's built for use. I don't know that the board's gonna weigh in on that, but we'd probably weigh in whether we buy a new one or not, and then whether the board or the town manager decides where it goes. I don't know. At this point, I don't think, especially without knowing what's gonna come, becoming into fund balance after the audit, which you told me about. I don't think today is the day that I'm willing to approve it, and I was willing to approve it before, and I may be willing to approve it down the road, but.
Can we put some money in an account somewheres and build this up so we can buy it?
I'm not opposed to putting some money into the budget.
Like, uh, the metal container, that is no money the town appropriates money to from sin, uh, from, from grumbles, and that takes in money every month, put that in that account like you did the cable account, you know? And then when it gets enough money, you can come to you guys and try to spend it. It just goes into the general fund now, I mean.
What, the revenue?
The revenue from the, from the, well, they have no, there's no appropriate money from the town for that.
Yeah, I think he's trying to say, yeah, all the money, the revenue we receive for the scrap metal, he'd like to be allocated to the, like, a loader reserve.
Transfer station equipment reserve or something like that, you know, and they go with it in that account. There's no money appropriated from the town to run that scrap metal.
How much money did you get out of that last year?
Twenty, I think it's close to 20,000. And that's all metal that the townspeople bring in and just throw in there, you know?
Right, and then you get money for.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know what I get for that.
I don't know that now's the time that we change that, but I guess I'm not against, if you wanna take that money, cause John can put it back into his equipment for the transfer station, I don't have a problem with that.
In order to get the, the 30,000 for a trade-in, what condition must the loader be in in order to get that 30,000?
I think running, but I don't know, they come up, they come up and inspect it and drove it, and they wouldn't come in with a different price, but the high one was 30,000, the others was 24,000, 25,000.
That price is based on the condition that they assessed it at when they came in before, which it could change now.
It could.
Could be less or more.
It could be down or could go up. I know that, I don't think you're gonna find any used equipment around right now.
You can do a couple of things. You can appropriate money every year through town meeting to put in an equipment reserve account to buy a piece of equipment, you can do that. You can also finance it for four or five years and budget the money every year to pay the financing amount, or you can put it in the budget for the full amount every year, not every year, but the year that you want it. I can't support taking $100,000 out of the fund balance account unless it's an emergency.
I don't, I don't, I don't approve that either, but.
So I, I don't support the funding for this or that, but I also think that when we all went down last year and looked at the different options and how everything was, I think that probably some of those options should have been looked into to see if they would work as far as dumping over that bank, because I know I, even Lois talked about how that was done before. And I, I talked to Brian about that, Brian told me himself, I mean, he remembered doing that, that was done years ago that way.
Brian, for the, for the, he told me it never happened.
Yeah.
Why would we build a wall down there if we'd have, come on, stop thinking about it?
No, Bob built that wall, he had a hundred yard regular trailer truck, and he backed that up there, and that's how he loaded his stuff in. That's the only one that ever's used it, is, is what I've been told. Bob put that in.
Okay.
And I'm, I could, and when I worked there, I can remember Warren, with everything being in the building, we kept all the, all the demo in the building, we take it out of the building and load a hundred yard of from, from Almighty. The big trailer truck would come in, he'd spin around, pull it up against there, we'd load it all in, but it's all squished up and broke up. So if you're just gonna have the people just throw it in the har, in the thing, there's no way to break it up, so it's gonna take, it's gonna take a lot more.
You still hold the edge of the, your loader and push it down like you're doing now?
No, that, that wall's a lot higher than a 50 yard container.
From the other side. You have to go drive around the other side and do it from the other side, just like you, when you're loading it out there.
Yeah, we usually break it up though first, that's the thing. I don't, I, I don't care if you, you fund it all at once, I, I'd like to have an account where, you know, maybe we can finance over five years. And if that's an option, then we put it out there to the people and say, this is what we want, a five year interest-free loan or something like that, and go from there. I'm just saying, it's, it's time for it to go away.
We have a transfer station reserve that we've spent money out of, there's nothing there now. If, you know, there's not a vehicle reserve like there is for the police, the rescue and the highway, I don't know, we need a separate, because you don't have that many vehicles down there.
Well, that might be all right.
But that might be, um, with the budget, budget committee recommendations, select for recognition, put money into that line towards a loader.
Like start that account now, or recommend starting that account now, if you would?
If that's the direction that we wanna take now. Again, I'm not speaking for everybody, I, I don't know what's the best, whether we take a new loader and give it to the highway department and, and hand it down, or we just buy a new loader from the transfer station. I can see the logic of both ways, but.
Why couldn't we, where there needs to be money set aside for these types of purchases? But you're saying you're bringing in 20,000 a year of metal, why couldn't we set, set it up just like the town has set it up with the snowmobile club and everything else, that the revenue comes in, and each year we vote at that meeting or an article to take the monies in the snowmobile and put it in the snowmobile account? Why couldn't the same thing be done for the transfer?
You mean.
If they're bringing the. They go back to the snowmobile.
Right.
And this year, it could be the same way, if he brings in 20,000 this year, 20,000 goes in, but if he brings in 15,000 next year, only 15,000 is in.
If you do that, you can't use that as projected anticipated revenue, so you're gonna lose one way or the other. I don't recommend doing that. I recommend keeping it on the revenue sheet, because here you're projecting, um, on the revenue side for the metals, that you're gonna burn 20,000 in, right? That 20,000 is being used to, uh, when you do your mill rate calculation as revenue coming in, so that you have that money to apply towards your taxes. If you take that 20,000 and put it in another fund, then you can't use it, you're gonna have to reduce your revenue by that 20,000, because you're not gonna get that in to go towards the taxes.
That isn't the same as a cable account like you done?
No, it's not.
Somebody comes in and.
Yeah, it really isn't the same thing. So, so then what happens is, um, that 20,000 would go in an account, so I don't support doing that. I support all revenues being projected as revenues, and then what is on this list of revenues that comes in, that money is used towards the tax commitment. So, anything that you're going to take out of the revenue string and put towards in another account, that money can't be part of the anticipated revenue. So you're either gonna use it for the revenues that are going to lower the tax commitment, or you're going to put it in its own account after it comes in as a, as a reserve account.
That's fine, with the reserve account, it's fine.
I don't support that. I support, well, I'm just telling you in my opinion, I think it needs, the revenue for the metal needs to be kept with the revenues and used towards the tax commitment, just like it is. If you want to budget a certain amount of money every year to go towards equipment purchase, then you can include in your capital budget, say, $25,000 in the budget to go towards equipment or vehicle, um, accounts, and then that money goes in there, and then when you have that money available, or your machine or vehicle dies, then you've at least got some money to go towards. And years ago, we did that. We budgeted money every year to, to put in a vehicle and or equipment reserve account, and then that practice stopped. So I support doing that, but I don't, I don't support taking money away from the revenue that's used to lower the tax commitment to put in a separate fund, because then you can't use it on revenue anymore.
That's not a guaranteed fund, probably, though.
No, it's not.
So if I may, I guess if the, if the board wants to do that, we do, as Dana has pointed out, have a transfer station reserve, so I, maybe an approach would be raising and appropriating 25,000, I'm just blowing a number out there, you know, X amount of money at town meeting to be placed in the transfer station reserve, the 9716 account, for future transfer station equipment, or however we wanna put it.
So what, what would be the difference? Just. If you're taking twenty million, twenty thousand in general fund, then you're over here lacking twenty thousand dollars at town meetings. It's a watch.
No, it's not. It's not as far as bookkeeping goes. Because that twenty thousand dollars that you're putting for anticipated revenue, everything that comes in on this sheet for revenue is used to lower the mill rate. So that's why you have to be conservative when you budget what your revenue intake is gonna be. Because if that revenue doesn't come in, you don't have enough money to pay. This, this is like money going towards your budget, your revenue, which you know that anyway.
Right.
So let's just say no, well, if you put twenty thousand dollars here and take it out, then you're not getting in what you're anticipating the revenue's gonna be because it's going someplace else.
But if you go to town meeting and raise twenty thousand dollars, no guarantee, like you're saying, what's gonna come in the general fund? But it's still gonna go to tax.
It's going to be added on your expense side, not on your revenue side. But you can't, you can't, it's like double dipping. You can't put it as an anticipated revenue because you're gonna take it away from the anticipated revenue. And I would betcha, if you put that in front of the auditor, he's gonna agree with what I said. You can't have it, you can't use the same twenty thousand dollars for an expense and revenue. It just doesn't work that way.
Every one of the others. If I may, follow up with you, Sharon. What you're saying is, and I believe you're right, if you take that twenty thousand dollars, earmark that, then that's no longer revenue.
Exactly.
In other words, like a dedicated revenue account, bring that money to a certain slot. First, you can over here, so you can't guard it as income because it's not a part of the general fund.
Right.
Therefore, you, even though you're trying to say you can raise twenty-five over here, whatever case may be, you don't record it as income because you can mark it as a dedicated revenue account. It's no longer income. And also, it's bookkeeping, that's what it is. You and I, you and I probably do differently on the farm.
Okay, some questions, colleague. So I'm hearing this is really, conversation sounds like we're, is one's dealing with two different questions. One is loader for, either new loader for highway department, current existing loader moving on to transfer station and trading the other. Second question is starting a reserve fund for future similar purchases, items that the transfer station needs. So I would, at least in my mind, I'm trying to separate those and kind of go back to what we started with on the budget, to buy or not to buy a new loader, and if so, where do the funds come from? So I guess my question is, that I haven't heard answered, where is the highway department's loader at in its lifespan? And are there existing reserve funds set aside to make a purchase? If a decision is made here to get a new loader, give that one to highway, whereas Dana said it's gonna be used for what it's designed for, and then have their current one move over to transfer station. So then that would eliminate potentially, if there's enough reserve there, and that's what the select board agrees to do with support of highway, to take this item, the transfer station purchase, off the table. And then the second question could be addressed, does the board wanna start a reserve fund for them, and if so, how much, and how would that be funded in this year's budget cycle? Because that's kind of what we're gonna need to figure out the next step.
Yeah, I had a similar question of whether to answer the highway department question first because again, it would moot putting the reserve in.
There's minimum money for highway, private partners. Could we just use it for something else?
I guess the concern I have is if we go forward and purchase the loader for the recycling station, two years down the road, we have to buy a new one for the highway department, I mean, two brand-new, basically brand-new loaders. We only need one new one. So I know the board's gonna make its decision, and I'm gonna recommend our, if we don't do it this time, we wait until we do what we did before and transfer the old one from the highway department. And by the way, Dana was using more regulated, a lot heavier than the transfer.
We're here to work, Sharon. So do we need to make a motion to not include the loader on fund balance?
I think to keep it clean, why don't we? Please.
Someone? I can. Do we have a discussion? All the paper? Close. Is now a good time to, or we can wait till we get to the budget? I do think we should put some money aside in one budget or the other for vehicle reserve. Now, whether it's the transfer station or the highway department, I guess that depends on what we're gonna buy the vehicle for. When we get to the budget.
Hit on that. What are the selectmen's thoughts on the other items that Ed has brought up here in his request? The heat pump, cement here, uh, cement, excuse me, overhead doors and paint. Those total forty-seven thousand, based on his estimate. And if I may, also, just to make it clear, throughout this capital budget, these funding recommendations, those are only just my funding recommendations. Those are based only on my opinion. So if the board has a different opinion on funding sources, by all means, I'm not trying to tell the board how they should spend this money. It's just my recommendation when I put things together, so.
So Ed could prioritize cement repair, overhead doors, and paint building. Which one's the most important? Cement work is, is a safety issue right now because the wall's falling in. Um, the doors are all rotted at the bottom. I'm thinking-
They open and close.
They open and close, but sap your gap and all, stuff comes in, water comes in, coming at their length, waters in the building. And then the painting is just, is different colored. Like, had the metals fixed on the recycled building and all that, they couldn't match the colors, so the transfer station really needs to be painted down. There's the two doors at the transfer station, I think probably went into insurance money but never got replaced. Only the big one got replaced after the fire. And I know that we had some damage down to building down back, and they got like seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars insurance money on that, and I got it done for seventy-five hundred dollars to building solutions. So that money somewheres, I don't know where, but.
So there was money for, for doors due to the fire?
I believe so, yes. And I don't think they ever got replaced, got replaced, but not a lot. And that's an insurance account somewheres, I believe. Not sure how much money's still in that, but that's what Butch always told me is an insurance account.
I don't have an answer for that tonight, so.
Well, if there's money in an account that we received for those doors, we need to figure out where that is.
They replaced the big one. They replaced the big one, but didn't replace the two small ones.
Are you sure that it wasn't just the big one that was, that would've been a part of that?
And I was told, I remember, maybe it was in last year's budget, which put it there for the doors replacement. And then, because they didn't go through town meeting, you went through, you went through your-
Fund balance.
Fund balance, and we'd never done it. So it never got done. That was like eleven thousand dollars, I thought, the last time.
So you've got three overhead doors. Is that what you're looking at?
Two, two small ones at the transfer, and the one at the recycling on the other end of the building, open and closed.
And a one of these three is the same that you're talking about, that we got insurance money for?
I'm thinking the two at the transfer station, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say yes, yes, but Butch cut it into the budget last year.
So what I would say on that is, I would say do some research to find out if there is an insurance account someplace that has some money in it. Bring that back to the board and then, um, because I don't know yet when we're going to put that, take that out of fund balance. So we can deal with the, I think we can deal with the overhead door issue that has to be replaced once we find if there is insurance money or not. And then that, that money for that can be handled at that time. So it doesn't need to even be here in consideration for the budget, if I'm saying that correctly, if you follow me.
But it does need one door. A recy-
Recycle.
But I think what Sharon's trying to say is that if we, we'll research what he was saying when Butch was here to find out if the insurance money came in and wasn't accounted for in his specific side first, before you guys-
Yeah, for the two.
Yeah, so whatever's in the insurance account, and whatever we need to replace the doors to do the net to come out of fund balance. That way we don't have to worry about going any further on this right now.
I'll call Butch and ask him, I mean, I mean, ask him if there was, if the two doors were subsequently replaced. But I know there was eleven thousand dollars in the budget last year in the capital program, and I didn't know where it was.
Let's see, and I chat a lot of person.
So has anybody even looked at the doors?
Yep, yeah, I got, I got estimates. Never been, never been this place open.
So why don't we just fund that as is listed? If we have the money for replacing doors, because I'm, I, we just kick that candle for the next few more years down the road. Why don't we fund the doors? If we find out we have insurance money, why can't that go back into the fund balance or put it into-
That's what I thought I just said.
Sorry, you said that we were going to take two doors out and see if there was money, and then-
No, I'm not taking any doors out. Whatever we need for doors, we will find the insurance money, take whatever, whatever we have from the insurance account, look at what it's gonna cost to replace what he asked for doors, and then take the rest out of fund balance.
But bring it back to the board for a vote?
Yes, the board can handle it at that point. But there's no point in saying, okay, I'm gonna approve fifteen thousand dollars for doors tonight, knowing that we might have other monies there. We may not need the fifteen thousand. So see if there is other money. If there is, bring the quotes and the money back to us, and we'll take a vote on it, and whatever we need in addition from fund balance, it may not be the fifteen. Isn't that what you're saying, Scott?
I say we approve what is got listed there, and if we have insurance money, we just put that money back in to replace what we take out of fund balance.
We don't need to take money out of fund balance. We don't need to take fifteen thousand dollars out of fund balance if we only need to take five.
I understand that, but we will just prolong this process longer and longer and longer.
It's not being prolonged. Find the money. If we have money, we should know it's there.
Hey, what about the heat pumps? People there?
I don't, I'm gonna make a motion that we fund the heat pump and cement repair in the fund balance tonight.
What about the painting of the building?
I think back to the way, until we get the audit back and find out how much money we have coming into the fund balance.
And I agree with that.
I mean, we have a little, or a lot of money coming back into the fund balance after this audit comes in, correct?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Money coming into the fund balance. We will know after the audit's complete, which shouldn't be too much longer.
I hope not, yep.
And then you'll have a little better idea how much more we can fund for the projects. I think everybody here probably has a certain amount that they're willing to spend out of fund balance. And there are probably, might be five different amounts, but, um, I'm certainly not gonna use some funding dollar tonight without knowing how much is coming back in.
Okay, so you got forty-five, seven-five, I'm gonna, can I make a motion on that?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Do we want a discussion?
All the paper? Close.
Okay.
And the other item, oh, I'm sorry, and the other items are, the loader and the other items we're setting aside for now. And we're not recommending those go-to commitment. We're recommending they set aside. Just wanted to make sure I'm understanding correct. I encourage you.
My first.
I'm good with you, thank you, Ed. Have a good night.
Yep.
Okay, next up is recreation. Unfortunately, Patty can't be here with us tonight. She's, uh, got another commitment. So we have sixteen, sixteen thousand six hundred total in this request. Patty's looking for dock replacement and installation for the Route Run twenty-one, ninety-one hundred. She's enclosed, or provided an email, which is attached. And then she's looking to do a new snack shack, or new hut, as we talked about, over at Pismo Beach for the beach attendants, and what she's proposing is seventy-five hundred. We have had some back and forth, a couple of board members and I have had some back and forth discussions on this snack shack hut here and so forth, and some of the questions that were brought up is whether or not we're even allowed to put another building down there, more information about the condition of the current building that's down there, what, and frankly, what size building do the beach attendants really need? It seems, you know, is a ten by twenty too large. So I'm just sharing the conversations that we've had. So my, my thought process, though, again, I was pointing to fund balance for the docks, and I was pointing to the rec building reserve for the hut, if you will.
So I support taking the money from fund balance for the docks so that that can be taken care of. Hopefully, we can get them installed this year. If it goes through the budget process, then we have to wait, and we won't be able to replace those docks this year. We'll have to replace them next year. So I support that. I'm not comfortable yet with this hut for the beach attendants. I asked the question where that would be built. I was told, well, you told me yesterday, somewhere between the water and the parking lot. So there are shoreline zoning issues as to where that can be put. There are no plans for this hut other than these dimensions. There's been no votes. We have no clue whether it can be built anyplace in that location. We don't know anything about it. There is an account here for, that you could take that out of. But I know last year the beach attendants went into the old concession stand, which is over twenty-five thousand, over twenty-five years old, and they sat in there. Beach attendants, they're perfect, they're not supposed to be sitting that far off from the beach. They're there to watch over the beach, clean it up, make sure that everything is orderly there. So I would not support purchasing this year under any means until something can be brought to us showing exactly where it's gonna be placed, whether or not it meets all requirements of shoreline zoning. And when all that is in order, then bring a proposal to go on and budget. And anybody that knows me, I don't very often not support anything to do with recreation, but that is not something that I support right now because there's no plan.
I went down there today, was looking at the concession stands. I know it's a little distance from the beach, from the area, but I think with a little rehab, that could spice-
It could. It could, and like I said, they did use it last year for, to store their, their items and also to go in there and take a rest. But it's still not in a location where it would be convenient for a beach attendant to be monitoring the beach. It's too far away from the beach. So if that's the plan to have something like that on the beach, then I think we have to first find out from the code enforcement officer where could something like this be located. And I also mentioned the fact that somebody needs to look at the deed on how we acquired that property because it does state that no permanent structure can be built. When the old concession stand was built, it was not built on a permanent platform. So that, I think, needs to be put on hold until we have more information. That's just my opinion.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Second.
Second.
Yes, I was, I was wondering, knowing that that original snack facility is not a permanent structure, and I'm sure it does need some rehab, is it possible to find out where that can be put, rehab and move and everything? What about if I were to do it?
Well, that was something I suggested to somebody today, and it actually could be done. It wasn't called either.
No, I just, I just wondered whether or not it would be in such disrepair, that if you move it, it won't be existent. When you get there, then go bother, but I'm just sticking out.
If possible.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion was second. Any more discussion? If not, open paper. Closed.
So just to make sure that I am clear, fund balance for the docks and no, nothing, then we're not moving forward with the hut. All right, moving forward to the police department. Uh, we have the police chief here as well. I look like Ricky with them too. Uh, they have a request this year of a hundred thousand dollars. They are looking to replace two police cruisers. Uh, they are, have a budget of fifty thousand dollars for each. And, uh, so I don't know. Would you like the chief to explain why he needs two vehicles and so forth?
Okay, well, he has two cars. I have two that I need to replace. One is a hundred and forty thousand, and I have a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And this year, we, we budgeted, you know, we're pretty much done our vehicle expense amount. That's updated. I'm just keeping it short and sweet, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Um, it was last fall, he came up, showed me a Dodge.
Durango?
Durango, yeah. And what other, I mean, I know the, uh, well, as the county was, county commissioner, didn't have very good success with the charges on the county end.
We're a different patrol than the county.
I understand.
The county goes from here to McGalloway, code three, you know, an hour, an hour and a half at excessive speed.
Oh, I understand.
But I'm not saying, we're looking for a good quality car so I can provide good public safety.
Right, and I mean, that isn't what you really want. According to you, when it came up, you guys wanted the?
We like the one with the Durango or an SUV.
Right.
Obviously, right now, the availability of SUVs is more than, um.
Has anybody put out an RFP yet?
I called five different dealerships in Maine looking for some.
What do you mean?
And they, they all said it was probably about a year out. I spoke to Leusha Coyne at Corrigan Augusta. He wouldn't even commit to when they'd be able to get anymore. He had twenty a little over a month ago and they're gone.
So to answer your question, no, an RFP has not been put out.
Okay.
When you, you know, you're not going to keep going.
No, that's fine.
But I think you, at the last meeting, you said that you had, I mean, granted, you're not crazy about the charges, but you did find two of them?
Uh, we did have two at Essies up here in, in Paris.
Now, the question, I, I mean, then it come up that, you know, we had, did we want a four-wheel drive? Are those all-wheel drive or?
Yeah, the V-six all-wheel drive.
The ones at the county had with the all-wheel drive or two-wheel drive?
Both, both. So they used, at first they used, the patrol vehicles were rear-wheel drive, heavy engines. Um, we had one that was an all-wheel drive, and then they eventually went to all-wheel drive. I would concur that idle charter is a great patrol vehicle from about April to November. Um, and it works fine in the winter too, until you have a snowstorm that is eight inches snow. Um, you, you guys have had charter before?
No, we have not.
I mean, you, you both know it's not ideal. Um, it's not really what you want. Um, I think my question is more on how badly do we need it now? You got a couple of vehicles in the place, I got a lot of mine.
Right.
I'm surprised that you got them this far. Um, how many vehicles we have?
Six.
Six? And in your opinion, how many do we need?
In extent, we need seven. My opinion though, we do need six vehicles. Otherwise, we're going to run one twenty-four seven, and we're just going to be in the same boat that we are now. My opinion only.
So the vehicles, you have a vehicle?
Yes, I do.
You usually take one of the oldest?
I have the old, I have one of the, I have the oldest vehicle.
The fleet?
Yes, I do.
And the captain has a vehicle?
Yes, he does.
And then you have two-day ship patrols, two-night ship patrols, and you start these over.
But I have my, I have my SRO. He uses a vehicle because he needs to cover the schools, both schools here.
What I was missing was the SRO.
In the south campus. He definitely needs a vehicle because times have changed, COVID. He's helping bring kids home, get kids to school.
I was not accounting for the SRO, but now that I forgot that we had that over there, so. Much the same with, with, with the loader. I, I do think it should go to RFP. Um, I would probably be convinced of buying one right now just for the number of miles on some of their vehicles. Um, and I know the availability is limited, but if we don't put the RFP out, we should be putting RFP out perhaps for next year. Um, put it out now because we'll be in the same boat next year if we don't.
Like, you know, I can do an RFP, New England wide, you know. We checked the site, the same site that the fire department had used, uh, and we called, they called us back, but those vehicles are in Tennessee.
Yeah, we, I mean, we, we went out and I know the scottles gone out, they went to New York to take them by their last ones. Um, I don't know. Worst-case scenario, you put an RFP for in the next six to nine months, six months to a year. Um, it's hard to get them to commit. Uh, but even if we buy these vehicles, uh, if the board approves buying one or two, uh, I still think we need to go to RFP soon for the next ones. Um, or we'll be here next year at this time, um, in the same predicament.
Our, our calls have increased, we're up ten percent. Um, vehicles are on the road twenty-four seven. I need two vehicles in all one, so I can provide public safety in this town. And I think from that point on, we should get one here and not, and, and rotate them out.
I think I said that five years ago.
Yeah, you did, and so that, so.
If a vehicle lasts five years and we need five vehicles, it's pretty simple math, we buy one year. However, it works, but we haven't been doing that.
I think I got a new employee who used to take care of your vehicles. And he told me that the two highest miles once are definitely beyond it now.
They're way, I'll tell you right now, they're way more miles than what we would put on at the county.
I mean, uh, like saying, forget it, that your other one is maybe not exactly what we wanted, but if you can find one local and it will do a good job, what? Because that, that finding equipment is no joke, you can't find any, anywhere. He's not making that up, that's real.
I know, way hundred percent.
What is the preferred vehicle that you want? Not aside from anything being available, SUV or? Ricky, I'm talking to you too.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, SUV or charger? What is the preferred vehicle?
We've never had a charger.
Okay, well, would you prefer to have an SUV or a charger?
We prefer to have an SUV.
Ricky, okay.
I agree.
So I think that's the way that you should go for one of them anyway. I know you're talking about wanting two, and maybe it does make sense to get one charger, but not two, in my mind. And I'm only going to throw this out, but when it's time for budget process, you should already have an RFP in hand for this committee so that we know exactly what the delivery is and what the cost is. That's just my opinion. So my suggestion with it is to put an RFP out right now for one vehicle, for what you want, an SUV, not a charger. And if you think you need a charger now, and in most cases, when you bid out, when you ask for pricing, I know the deliveries are backed up now, but they were always backed up. Every time I did an RFP for a police cruiser, my delivery for the new one was a year, unless they had something on hand. So that's just.
We've never had to wait here, Sharon.
Well, I'm just telling you what I had to do. And I always dealt with Leo at Corrigan. And on the new ones, it would be quoted for delivery of a year. If he had something in stock, we could get it right now. But you have to start that bid process early. Not trying to be a bully on this, but I just think maybe we need to look at how we do things. But for a police cruiser and any vehicle like that, I think we have to have a formal RFP. When, when you get the price back, they're going to tell you when the delivery is. You're going to go on the schedule at that point of when that vehicle could come. Every time you get a verbal, you're not on any schedule to get a vehicle that is a year out. So I would at least put one for an SUV. I don't think it makes sense to get two chargers right now because they're available and you're willing to settle for two. You want an SUV, go through the process of an RFP and get the, the SUV that you want, even if it is a year delivery.
But are my, are expenses are going to go up other repairs?
I get that. You budget, the newer your vehicle is, the less your expense budget is. The older your vehicles are, you add more in that maintenance budget every year.
I understand that, but I want safe vehicles out there too.
I'm not, well, yes, you have to have them safe. I'm not saying they're not going to be safe, but, but if, unless you can tell me that those vehicles are unsafe and have to be taken off the road right now, and I don't, when I ask that question, it's early access.
How's the electronic steering in yours? Is there any truth level?
Well, it's not the greatest though.
That's correct.
Should that be kind of a critical thing?
I go, I'm, I'm the chief and I don't, very rarely am I first responder. I am at times, but.
It's one of these vehicles here, yours?
Mm-hmm. The highest mileage one of them?
Hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Mine's a one forty, a one thirty-nine, two fifty.
Liability, whether he's using it to go home with, if he gets somebody with it, who's, who's going to have a problem?
So, if, if I may? So first of all, Sharon and I are on the same page when it comes to the RFP, you know, what, everything she just said as far as RFPs. Generally, when I, when I'm putting together a budget, however, I like to know that put forward that we have a budget, whether it be a capital budget or not, to work, to work with. Generally, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about allowing the purchase of these vehicles immediately right now. What it would be is we'd be talking about the money to be appropriated so that the purchase could be made in the near future after an RFP, RFP process. This process has gotten muddied this year because nothing is available. So the chief and Ricky have been working on trying to find options. So we're kind of somewhat putting the cart before the horse at the same, you know, as well. Um, there's vehicles available, there's two chargers available, and they're having a hard time finding other stuff. So normally, I would say, yes, we need to wait, we need to do an RFP, we need to, you know, get the funding and, and do that normal process. Given the circumstances and given the mileage, whether it be one or two cars, um, we have an opportunity right now to purchase these chargers. If the board is not interested in purchasing those chargers, it's fine, we move on. But just bringing those opportunities to the board so that you know that they're there. On a note on vehicles, I do think, and I as the manager feel that I need to lean on my department head on telling me what kind of vehicles that he needs, or he needs, I guess, if that's the case. You're also talking to a guy that used to do his patrol in a rear-wheel drive Crown Victoria, whether there was two feet of snow on the ground or not. So the thought of an all-wheel Dodge Charger sounds like heaven to me. But maybe I'm a little old school, so, anyway, I just want to make those comments, that's all.
All right, looking at the material at Adam's past house, what, I don't see anywhere listed any chargers. Well, actually, the Dodge, the Durango, am I misinterpreting what's going on? I'm lost with the charger that'll be used.
In that packet, in the updated packet that I handed out that has the updated capital in it, there is the information they got for the chargers as well.
Why, it's a car, I see where it's written on it, I didn't realize the charger when I looked at it.
Your fence, Henry, got a rope charger on?
It's in, I saw it. I thought it was just for.
My, the question, Tennessee, have, do you have two SUVs?
They do, but they're not, uh. The guy was not very forthcoming that, when Zach and I spoke with him. We, we had talked to him about having them all fully equipped, one of those forty-six and one of those forty-nine. And that didn't come with everything we need, so it seemed like it was going to be more expensive for the time we get down over fifty grand. And he didn't give us a base price on those two models.
Is that the one you emailed me about, Mike?
Yeah.
So what is the total cost of the charger?
The charger's at, it was thirty-one eight.
And then plus the equipment that you have to have for it?
Yeah, estimated equipment is around between, because we want to update new equipment. We haven't had new equipment for years, between ten and twelve thousand.
So for the car and to get it equipped?
Uh, like forty-two five if we go on the charger. That's, will give us a month, or not money to make everything, all the data.
So the fifty's just a ballpark figure?
Yeah, fifty's a ballpark figure. Fifty's high with the chargers, and it's not enough for the four that you get. It's close.
The only thing that you got on the tape is the charger. Am I getting that right or no?
Right now, yeah.
And you tell them we need them right now?
Yes.
I make a motion, take the shot.
Second? Any more discussion? Um, so. It's not ideal, but we're not in an ideal situation. There's no other vehicles in, probably in New England, um, police vehicles. And you guys have booked, and I did, we booked, we bought, county bought the last Dodge Durango from Essies. The last, it was a four pickup truck from Mr. Chahom. Um, they're, they're even out there right now. I do think we need to not only unfortunately purchase these two vehicles, um, clean the budget some money for a vehicle for next year because you're going to have warranty more next year than you can go. Um, and I do think the RFP needs to go out sooner rather than later for that year.
Yeah, but he's only looking at one issue.
Yeah.
Is that in it?
Yeah, I, I agree with you folks. Yeah, so the five-year capital plan, that's what it contemplates, is that we did two, do two this year and then one a year moving forward. So we get into that rotation.
That's what I had. I haven't, I have not looked all over New England.
I have. I have. Because I really wanted to find a Durango or Explorer, even a Tahoe.
Sure, um, so they can correct me if I'm wrong, but having just cut a check for a county vehicle, it was to replace one that got totaled. And so I think you're looking at a situation, one of our deputies hit the deer and controlled one of our vehicles. We're buying one of those, and you won't have it, you won't have anything. So it would be my recommendation, just based on the way we go through vehicles and given the scarcity and scarcity we've all experienced in trying to find these vehicles, that again, it's not ideal, you want the RFP, you want the time, but it's rather dire. I don't need to be alarmist about it, but it really is.
The alternative is you're going to buy some street-level vehicles that, what the chief had, a non-pursuit vehicle. That's a vehicle you can find. And that's, that's not ideal, but it can be, that could be done if needed, um, for a short period of time. Um, you need pursuit-rated vehicles for a patrol. Absolutely, you can't put them in a non-pursuit rated vehicle, you're just asking for a whole lot of trouble.
Nice tone for it.
The chief or the captain, perhaps, to do a civilian-rated vehicle, but knowing you have limitations. If that's what it comes to, indeed. If that's what it comes to in vehicles at hand next year, who knows? Because the big departments have bought lots of vehicles, they'll buy them first.
Good motion with second on the floor, no expression on, no, on favor. Post. Thank you.
Okay, ask a quick clarification. So is that up to fifty thousand dollars for each vehicle? And we're waiving the RFP process, just to be clear?
Yeah, but I think we should start right in on the RFP for next year.
For next year, it's like Julean Ham said, yeah, okay.
With your quote, I'm not interested in trading that police, the fire vehicles.
That's okay. Okay.
And that is coming out of fund balance.
And that is coming out of fund balance.
Right.
So, just so I know where we're going on the budget, is that approval for fifty per one vehicle, or was that just put up in the risks?
For one, two vehicles.
That's not budget, that's fund balance.
Fund balance.
Excuse me, Mike?
Yeah, sorry.
Let's make sure we touch base in the morning to make sure we get this taken care before they go away, okay?
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
You still have it?
Well, hopefully no one's hit a deer in the last few.
Last few hours. I didn't know the last thing you checked that he had on, but you better check quick. They, they was holding it for us until we did a review. What am I talking?
Are we ready to go to the highway now?
Yes.
All right. So I got Jim here with us, he's really looking forward to come to the front of the room.
Not really, but I'm-
All right, so for the highway department, we have a total of four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in requests. The first is a replacement of the two thousand nine Freightliner. The, this is not an RFP, but it is a quote, a quote for budget purposes to them, so we can go out to RFP if the funding is approved. For two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's the, Jim can give better specifics, but that's for a truck and the headgear and the plow and wing equipment. The next item, when we scroll down here, is a sidewalk machine and snow blower, and that would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars total. Now, I have also noted on your sheets, a tractor with attachments, and over on the far right margins, attachments, snow blower, mower, sweeper, and it's all about sixty thousand dollars, and you can see that, you can see that information's in there as well. In discussing with Jim, he feels that the tractor would be able to do what we need to do and save a significant amount of money, but we'll spend on that in a minute. And then the next item is a four-ton asphalt, asphalt hot box recycler at forty-five thousand. You'll find that in your materials as well. Also, the replacement of a zero-turn mower for nine thousand. And then a welder for two thousand, and then the garage, the trim around the garage, at the garage, for fifteen thousand.
That trim should also stay roofed.
Trim and roofed?
Yeah.
Okay. So, did you wanna maybe talk about why we need to replace the Freightliner and what you're looking for and?
Well, on that one truck, I've been here three years. I have just under forty thousand dollars worth of invoices since I've been here on that truck. In just, this past week, here's at the garage again. It's at that point where it's getting like wiring issues. We just had a fuel issue with it, we've had the EGI valve replaced. It's a two thousand nine, and was, from what I understand, none of them were really taken care of previously. I realize, I think we're on like a fifteen-year cycle for trucks, I hope, yes. So it's in close to that fifteen years, but I really, really don't believe we can depend on it for another couple of years before we hit the fifteen-year cycle. The one point this year, I had three of them in the garage during the snowstorm. Unfortunately, it was stuff that couldn't be fixed now. The oh-nine, I think we waited, I think the last time was two or three weeks or five, it's got a Mercedes motor in it, so, oh, we came from Germany, I don't know where it come from, but it was a while getting here. And it's just getting, it's just the point where it's not, I never snowstormed a Benpool truck.
So I think what we're, what we're looking for is, again, we've received quotes to give us a cost estimate on what our budget needs to be. If the board, if the board chose to go to fund balance for this, we would go out to RFP. If the board wants us to go to town meeting, then obviously we would, we would look for funding from town meeting up to, or potentially this is something that we would consider, you know, getting a loan on and getting a note on, or a lease purchase or what have you, for the future, but.
And again, same with any other vehicle, they all told me upfront that it would be called for fourteen months.
Because this wasn't something they had on the floor?
Oh, no, no, it was to be built.
He, he doesn't need it. I mean, oh-nine was the first that they got into, it was the earliest out of the submission stuff. And they, and in the mileage therein was solved and everything is, everything's, you know, on wires, you know what happens to that, you don't call them.
Got a hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and three miles.
I actually support the purchase of the Freightliner. I think the two thousand and nine definitely has to be replaced. I agree with that, it just needs to be taken out of the fleet. In supporting that coming out of fund balance, that's probably gonna be the end of what I'm gonna support coming out of fund balance, because I'm not going to be looking at taking five hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance. And I could support that. As far as the sidewalk machine, I think the, in reading the materials, the sixty thousand dollar tractor that you're looking at versus the actual sidewalk machine, I think that will work. Those pieces of equipment weren't good with the attachments, so it'll also give you opportunity to use that in other situations as well. That I think should come on. It's not needed right now. Having the money to order the Freightliner now, going out to bid is what I recommend that I might do in RFP, with the specifications that you want for a vehicle and the attachments for it. I think that the sidewalk machine, my recommendation would be that that be on the budget. The other item you have here is the zero-turn mower. I think that can be put in the budget along with the welder, and probably has to convince me on the actual need for the forty-five thousand dollar fast stop.
It couldn't get off completely easy. It's not, it's not really a matter to recycle. And my issue is now, I just pay a hundred and forty dollars a ton for coal patch that stays in a hole maybe a week. This hot box, and I don't know if you guys know, but they're designed so, I have like a two-hundred-yard pile of asphalt down back of me accumulated from changing cross bikes and stuff. My initial plan was, at some point, have somebody come crush it and we could use it on dirt road or something. But these asphalt hot boxes recyclers, I can actually put that into the hot box. They're on a timer, or you don't have to use a timer. You can set it, it heats it up, replays that hot tub, and it's fine to use again. That being said, I can't guarantee, but we should not have the need to purchase any more coal patch. I understand that it's expensive. I'm looking at the long-term picture and not just because I want something that's pretty and new. If your coal patch, whatever, gets old at the end of the day, you can lean it in there and heat it up again the next day and keep going. There should be minimal, minimal waste that way, and you use it all recycled hot tub. Norway has one, Paris has one. I have not, who's been one of those? I've watched them function, material shovels really easy, and it seems to be staying in place. And my thought was just, I get it, it's an industry, it spends the initial cost, but over time, it would be worth it.
What's the expense, you know, what is the life expectancy or something like that?
From what I mean, gold, twenty-five years, as long as it's kept up. I mean, you might have to change the burner or something, but get on a trailer, can also dispense tack if you need to. He's supposed to get back to you rather than can dispense your rubber eye and scrap seal it, means if you wasn't a hundred percent sure about that, but he's supposed to get back to you.
That would be benefit.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Because that can be quite expensive to have.
Exactly.
It is actually.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. I've budgeted some money for that this year, but I don't, I've never had it gone for a million dollars cost.
You can do it yourself.
Well, that's a very good explanation. Thank you.
Is the state using any of this hot patch?
Yeah, state's got hot boxes, yeah.
I'm looking at along Twenty-Sixth right near St. Phil Road. Do they have patches that?
Yeah, last week there, I was doing the dump truck, the coal patch. So, but they do have hot boxes. Why they're not using it, I don't, up here, I don't know. I don't know, I don't, maybe they only have one per camp and it's, I don't know.
I was gonna say, if that's an example of hot patch, we don't want it.
No, right, oh, no.
It's just like the brain, they have one, it's what they're using now.
If that was the result we got out of a hot box, I wouldn't be even paying you guys to ask.
That's a result of not having one.
Right, that's, I mean, that's what we're doing now. I can't tell you how many times you've been up with them all, oh, didn't go up there today, you never know what meant.
And you could make one more trip.
I know, exactly.
Can I ask a question on the-
Only after you have the blow up.
Yeah.
The thought is, we're gonna pay.
Question on the hot box. So we've got the cost figured out and life expectancy of a piece of equipment, but a cost of maintenance for that piece going forward, and then the other question is to recoup our cost, how much of the material that business produces are we paying for per year by not having a box? Trying to get an idea how long it's gonna take to recoup the cost.
Right. And I just, okay, just since this spring, I'm gonna say, within, from the end of February until today, I've spent four thousand dollars on coal patch. That, I mean, what's that amount? Maintenance-wise, it's like anything else, you gotta keep up with, it's gotta have a weekly maintenance schedule, you gotta obviously grease with the lens or stuff. And I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that nothing does it alone because that's impossible. But like I said, you might lose a burner once in a while, it's all propane operated by an engine at it, or diesel, either, it's your choice. And you may lose a burner, other than that, just like salt became trailer.
Any warranty with it set up?
Five years. Yeah.
So forty dollars difference between hot dog with coal patch. Should we run by this?
Well, right now, they're quoting me ninety dollars a ton for hot dog and a fair hundred and forty for coal patch.
Yeah, but you're saying you could use what you've got down back?
Absolutely. It's like, I got probably two-hundred yards pile left down there. Like I said, I was gonna have crushed at some point, but when we got it out.
Well, let's wait a month, we can do the rest of it.
Yeah, use it all there, you know?
But yeah, yes, yeah.
So it could be used for, I think you explained to me, it could be used for the potholes, but also like Cold Water Brook extension, when we fix that, it could be used for maybe a project that size?
Yeah, but I wouldn't go much bigger than that. And you just, you can dispense either by chain or if you want, it dumps. So you can add here that, if you so choose.
What's the available, what are those?
All you have to do is make a phone call, it's readily available.
So that's something that could wait.
Oh, absolutely, that should go, that should go to town meeting.
Well, not necessarily town meeting, but finally, having that, getting to fund balance.
That is one of the items that I thought would, if it goes forward, that we would look towards town meeting frankly, or if you guys would like to reconsider after we have the auto back, whichever works.
So I see that, I was yelling, you have the community, that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the truck, is that right? I was not telling you.
I did, I got five quotes, and Freightliner was lowest at this point.
No, I'm just saying, for us here.
Yeah, no, I mean, just call Freightliner. And Mac wouldn't even give me a quote because they have most logs left, and they have no idea what you can get.
Boy, probably was that.
I can't hear right off.
Okay, I was gonna hear a motion.
Sorry.
More discussion? Not ongoing.
Was there discussion about the tractor? Who's that item?
That was gonna come out of fund balance.
Huh?
I thought coming out of fund balance was gonna come out of fund balance, correct?
So, tractor town meeting, zero-turn town meeting, and welder town meeting, that's-
I did just get some calls back today about the zero-turn mower.
Yep.
I think it was like-
Seventy, seven, yeah, seven thousand, I think it's like, and roof and garage trim town meeting as well. I don't mean to reiterate it, I just wanna make sure I'm clear, that's all. Okay?
You scratched the snow blower as well.
So we scratched the sidewalk machine and snow blower, because that was an attachment for the sidewalk machine.
Thank you.
Do we have, does anyone have any questions for Jim?
Do they need any tums or anything?
We can fix that.
Regular town meeting.
I know, right? All right, next up, thank you Jim, next up is the fire department. The updated, the updated one here, the two purchases for the fire department are air pack bottles and turnout gear, the total of sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Fire chief's put together a plan where he's doing, you know, replacing these air pack bottles on a five a year at a thousand dollars a piece. And then the turnout gear, three sets a year at thirty-eight ninety-two a piece, the cost of this stuff, the supporting documentation's in here for you. My recommendation for the funding of these capital purchases would be to fire a quick reserve for the total of sixteen six seventy-six.
Do you have that funding there now?
It is there now.
I, I would like to think that these are gonna be recurring, things that we're replacing every, so many every year, and I think we did this, I'm not sure Chief Soffel was here or who was the chief at the time, when, again, the budget was, it was, we were gonna get so many a year, so recurring purchase like that, it should be in the budget.
The bottles are a fifteen-year shelf life, so we broke it down to five bottles every year, and it just sits every current cycle.
And those five bottles every year, that amount should be in the budget.
It has like last year, five thousand every year.
So if it's there, why are you taking it from the reserve? The reserve.
I think it's, uh, I think we're talking. I see it as a equipment replacement. I understand it's a recurring cost. I see it as a capital item, that's just my perspective, that's why I've included it in the capital budget. I think it's one of those things, um, that we have, you know, we have these reserve accounts, there's money available, uh, for the purchase. I'm taking the approach, and I understand the money won't be there next year. But at the same time, I also understand, and I, that when we get the audit back, that, you know, we'll be reapproaching the fund balance and seeing what needs to change there. But my perspective is, these major equipment purchases should be capital purchases outside of the operating budget. But that's just my perspective and the way that I do it, that doesn't mean it's right, wrong, or indifferent, it's just my approach.
I actually agree with them. That it should be part of the capital purchasing budget. Because you have to add money to it every year so that when you need it, the money stay up. And in this case, it's put into a reserve account. Yeah, I agree with that.
I don't disagree. So are we, are we gonna spend that money from the capital account, stay in the budget? This coming year, which I see turnout gear in there.
We've always been relying on the turnout gear because it's about the number of gear that we need to teach it.
Right, in the operating budget, it's, it's the, it contemplates the replacement and repair for, you know, on-the-job breaks. This is the replacement cycle, if you will. So I think if I'm hearing what you're saying is that we're gonna spend this money today, what about replenishing it for tomorrow? Is that the gist of what you're saying?
And I just wanna be clear, where, if we're budgeting, we should be budgeting money for this, I think, in the budget. If it's something that we spend every year, we, we pay the fire chief's salary every year, it goes into the budget. To me, it's, it's just more, hate to use the word transparent, but that's money that we know we're gonna buy air packs every year. It should be there. It shouldn't be something that we pull out of fund balance. In emergency situ, unless it's an emergency situation.
Did I just hear that it was in the budget already? I didn't, it is not.
No, i- in the operating budget, there is some money there for repairs of turnout gear and so forth.
What about the, the other stuff, the replacement stuff is not in there?
The replacements is part of the capital budget, this, this separate.
Okay. Well then, if it's already part of the budget, why would we take them about coming out of the reserve? That isn't what you're just saying.
Well, we have, we're talking, we're gonna take it out of the fire equipment reserve tonight. I'm assuming it's gonna go through, another problem. If we don't budget it in the budget for next year, that reserve won't be there. So now, next year, we're looking at the fund balance policy. If we didn't budget for it, and we've already expended the fire department equipment line, it's gotta come somewhere next year.
So, this is again, my opinion only. One of the things that I think that we need, we meaning the board and the manager, need to talk about in the future is this fund balance policy account. We need to nail down exactly how this is gonna be handled moving forward. One of the thoughts that I have is after we get the audit, I, I wish we had the audit frankly, months ago. That's a frustrating point here. When we get the audit back and we find out what we actually have in our unassigned fund balance, that's when I'm gonna present to you folks, meaning the board, the recommendation for, based on our policy, what to be transferred from unassigned fund balance to the fund balance account, this, uh, reserve account. And at that point, I think that we should probably make it an annual item on that same day, that let's say, three hundred thousand dollars is transferred over. Are we leaving all of that money in the fund balance reserve? Or are we gonna transfer, say, twenty thousand dollars to the fire equipment reserve for future purchases? I'm hesitant to go to town meeting and, you know, and recommend asking for twenty thousand dollars for fire department equipment when we may seeing that money come from, you know, the fund balance policy account. I, I don't wanna use the word that I'm cheap. But I, I just, I feel like that's a more frugal approach, that's all.
I, I think my hangup is that we don't know, we don't have the audit. So I don't know how much is gonna go back into the fund balance policy line. And without knowing how much is gonna go back in there, I'm reluctant, reluctant to spend too much out of that line. We're not talking about spending what we're gonna use the fire department equipment line, so I'm good with that. I don't know going forward.
That's your, that's your concern still, Paul.
Knowing, yeah, the audit's taking a little bit longer and usually we have it by now. And I think that's probably the biggest, my biggest hack is not knowing what's there. And I wanna run fund balance policy down too far, we don't really, we're gonna have, I do expect there's gonna be some, like, continue to, especially how much.
And that's why I said what I said earlier, is I'm hesitant to spend or approve spending much more out of fund balance right now because we really don't know what that amount's gonna be once the audit's completed. We always hope it's gonna be a high amount, but it may not be, we don't know that. And until we know that, I don't wanna run into the ground because we have some big items that are coming up, uh, that we're gonna need money for, like the revaluation for one thing. And if that money can come out of fund balance money, then we don't have the budget for that. So that's gonna be a big cost. So I'm with Dana on that, too. The reserve account that you're talking, fire equipment reserve, is that that fire equipment account that has twenty thousand, one ninety-six in it? Is that the one you're referring to?
We need to go check for that.
One nine.
Ninety-seven oh nine. Yep, ninety-seven oh nine, yep. Yes, ma'am, yep.
Okay, we should abort. I love the motion, fund those out of that one. Fire equipment line. Do more discussion, hold a favor.
Thank you. All right, and then the last, uh, the last capital budget is for wastewater, wastewater treatment sewer. I do not ask the need to be here because I frankly thought this was rather straightforward. Making a thirty thousand dollar contribution to the treatment plant repair reserve account, the ninety-seven thirty. And my recommendation would be to put that on town meeting.
I make a motion to do so.
Discussion, hold a favor.
Okay, I, uh, that's all we have for capital requests this evening. Okay, so let's figure out how much we just approved. Oh, you did?
I'm gonna make a motion for the budget committee that we adopt the recommendations that the board, the persons have made as it relates to the capital group account. Thank you, members, we appreciate it very much for bringing us up to date the way we are. We're in conference room two.
Do you, uh, want me to take a couple minutes and just add this stuff up real quick and then, uh?
Well, I would say maybe wanna wait on that item because I don't know how the rest of the budget committee feels, but we've got two things left that we've gotta deal with before we can vote on budget recommendations. Thirty party, thirty party requests to fuel money, I guess, so.
I think we're not knowing tonight, as long as you can probably email us.
Send it out, okay.
Because if we can address those. Those changes can be brought into the revised budget based on votes on capital. And then I would think by next year, it's me that you can have a near final version to consider. Does that sound reasonable to folks?
Yep.
I'm trying with whatever gets us out of here by.
There you go.
You can just make a motion to approve everything is written and that'll get you out of here right now.
No, wait a minute.
So if. If you want, um, okay, if we hit the third party request first? Okay with everybody? So that's under municipal. So at the last meeting, we talked about, we talked about lifelight for one thousand twenty-eight, seniors plus for two thousand. And we had a gentleman here from Andrews Skoggan Home Health requesting five hundred. So you have documentation from all of these folks in here, or the organization, excuse me, in here. Uh, what I had included in the budget calculation was three thousand twenty-eight dollars. That was based on what the town has donated to lifelight and seniors plus, I believe it was last year, so I didn't include any of the others because I thought that was up to the selectmen and so forth, I discussed.
Can you make a recommendation, or do you want?
Well, I'm personally, I feel that lifelight, the thousand twenty-eight seniors assistance, fifteen hundred and five hundred for Andrews Skoggan Home.
What was the last one off, Colleen?
Andrews Skoggan Home, five hundred.
I'm sorry, Colleen, we have a hard time dealing over the night, whole business.
My thoughts, go back, lifelight, a thousand twenty-eight, seniors plus, fifteen hundred, and Andrews Skoggan Home health, five hundred. The other thoughts for more, anybody else have any thoughts?
I would agree with that. I would do, only as because of the numbers. I would do one thousand instead of one thousand twenty-eight. I like even numbers.
I'd appreciate that.
It's just, it's not as massive in the real population. I go back.
So what would you suggest, Sharon, then?
A thousand for lifelight, fifteen for seniors plus, and five for Andrews Skoggan. Just like Colleen said, I just took out the twenty-eight dollars. And it's only because of healthcare.
Just an even, appreciate it.
What's that?
An even fruit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say? I'm waiting for it.
Me, I'll say what I said last time, I just don't feel that taxpayers' money is money that I should decide what's a good idea to spend on, on stuff to deal with. I've been in the minority before.
I can agree with Floyd, though we think these two have a lot of impact on the town. All three, lifelight, the rest, but the others are definitely.
I go with Sharon.
I would agree with the, the board's, uh, recommendation that we go with a thousand for lifelight, fifteen for seniors plus, and the five hundred for Andrews Skoggan Home healthcare. That makes you go total to three thousand, yes.
Setting. Hold on, hold in favor.
Fuel costs? Would you like me to go to fuel costs now?
Yes.
All right. So, I gave, uh, I handed out a couple of spreadsheets regarding, uh, gas and diesel forecast. So one thing I just wanna throw out there is that, uh, I think I noted in your, uh, an email I sent out here. But we, Ed and I discussed the transfer station, here it is. Transfer station diesel, we found an error, uh, in the diesel calculation of gallons. There actually should have been five hundred and seventy gallons, it was, uh, three hundred something prior to that. We accounted for, we didn't account for all three pieces of equipment, we only counted for two. So moving that up to five hundred and seventy gallons brings that at three fifty gallons in nineteen ninety-five. So that's, it's a small, it's a small change from what you have on your fuel forecast. But, um, I think for tonight, we need to decide what the boards feel is a comfortable amount per gallon to pay, or, excuse me, you know, to, to budget here. And, um, so I've done the same thing, you know, here, is I've got three fifty a gallon, all the way up to ten dollars a gallon. And based on what the boards feel is the right price for those, I can input those numbers into the budgets.
What's our price right now?
I have estimated three fifty a gallon in this budget.
Tax or anything else?
Right.
It's a guesstimate. And I buy as much duty as anybody does. I hate to thought it's gonna go up anymore, but I don't know that I necessarily believe it's going down, but with the town pricing and everything, I mean, it's hard to believe it's gonna give more than five, I would think.
What's actual town price for gas and actual town price for diesel?
Right, so, well, we're gonna, right now, no, right now, we're finishing up last year's bids and we're like, we're either side of two dollars for each of those. So I mean, we're doing really well right now. But that bid expires, we are gonna have to go back out to bid, April is usually when that happens. But, um, last year, we put the bids out and we didn't get anybody to respond. We had to actually reach out directly to the current vendor to get them to even give us a price to lock in.
Let me phrase it differently, because I don't know how, what town pricing is, so, I don't, I sure know what the pump prices. I don't know. So what's town price relative to pump price? In other words, is there taxes we're not paying?
Right, we don't pay safe tax, for instance, um, when we, when we buy it, so that's why it's discounted.
And how much is that a gallon?
Thirty-five, thirty-five cents of the price.
So we, so if gas is four thirty-five, we have four. And diesel, is it the same deal, or is it different?
It was a different amount of tax on the diesel, like, you got, you got.
Right now, we're paying two forty-nine ninety.
Yep.
I, I don't know what gas is.
Another thing that, just as a tidbit that we're working on, too, is Jim's been looking into, we've got those tanks over at the highway garage. He's been getting prices on what it might take to get those tanks back in service, which would then allow us two thousand gallons potentially? To purchase two thousand gallons in bulk, which would be significantly cheaper. But that's a work in progress that you folks will hear about when we actually get real numbers, so.
What do you guys think's the price?
I would get a lot, I would improve the higher price for all fuel, fuel, fuels, yeah, than what we have.
Four fifty or five fifty?
Four fifty, five fifty?
Four fifty or five fifty, that's what he had to.
Well, you can change that.
When are we gonna contract, when are we gonna try to?
April's generally when we put this out, so I'll put it out, and Ed, I like to advertise things for thirty days. So I mean, April, then we get back in May, hopefully.
So.
Go with the highway.
I'm not trying to be difficult here, but if we budget a certain amount and then do an emergency line that you budget separately. And then, when we get to town meeting, will you just cut that emergency line because we're not gonna need it? Or now, we're definitely gonna need it?
Well, I think.
Two separate lines for fuel.
I think one way, one way to do that is, you know, if we, you know, if we wanna, if we wanna do a projection today, and let's say we wanted the five or four fifty, whatever you folks said. And then the bids come back and we find out it's three fifty a gallon, or four, whatever it is. On town meeting floor for these budgets, you know, I can raise my hand and recommend that we do a reduction of that particular budget by a thousand dollars or whatever it might be, so. Right. If they let me talk.
You wanna move it?
Either way, you can motion it either way up or down.
Go probably low with the gallons, like, move it.
How much, Floyd?
Five.
For both fuels?
You had to pick a number that was in between two estimates on the spreadsheet.
Go five, go, go with a 550.
550.
550.
Okay, go 550.
Come on.
Do more discussion, hold paper.
Was that for the five or the 550?
550.
So Adam's already got that number all worked out, I don't want to.
I can only add once. So just so everybody knows, that means that total townwide, our budget for gasoline will be 51,761. Our townwide budget for diesel would be 72,661. So.
What was the original total?
Originally for gas, townwide, 32,939. Originally for diesel, 46,239. So.
The bottom of the dump truck.
Cheers.
You have to dump Robinson Hill, left stock that you're out.
I deliver barrels with him.
What was that?
I'm sorry, Henry, what was that?
What was that doing for 550?
550 gas would be 51.
I guess that was the diesel, we had to adjust that.
72,661.
Thank you.
Yep.
The president today released, how many barrels of gas?
Reserve.
Out of the Federal Reserve? What, a day or day and a half, what?
A million a day.
A million a day.
A million a day until it runs out.
Well, that's another one that's on to us.
I have no opinion. So, all right. Do we want to try and go through any of these other budgets, if we have time, or what would the boards like to do?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the budget as presented with the adjustments that have been made this evening for all categories, with recommendations from the budget committee to reflect those amounts.
Okay, it's been checked. Okay, it's been moved and checked.
So, here for clarification and discussion. So the changes that Adam included in this budget that have been discussed at all prior meetings, incorporating the capital budget is voted by this selectman. And then third-party payments that we talked about. And 550 gallons on all fuels, numbers extracted.
Yep.
Okay, so all will be paid, everybody.
Painless. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, votes.
I'm not ready for that. I'm not thinking about everybody else's, I don't think I have voted. And then we're done with them. They made their, oh, recommendations.
Okay. I'm happy to do whatever you'd like to do. Would the selectmen like me to, we could start right at the top and go through each department if you'd like?
Well, I don't know that we need to go through each one. I held most of my questions because we were here for their budget committee meeting. Maybe I shouldn't, maybe I should have asked more, I was in play. Come on, we got, we got too many over by now. I'll show you that.
We gotta reselect that clock.
I know, I keep looking at it.
Six months later, again. So, one of the, one of the items I noticed, right off the top, the regular salary lines in most of the departments.
Yes.
He's doing a very good job of breaking them down. So let's start right, I don't have to pick on any one, but for them, the front. Under admin, you get the code enforcement officer first.
Yep.
And the attachment egg shows that change being paid at a rate of $26 an hour.
Yep.
If that's accurate. And then you have a 5.9% increase for COLA.
Yep.
And then another 60% increase, or 60 cent increase that drives the new rate to $28.13.
So the approach that I took for these payroll lines is that last year, employees received 1% across the board. And then moving, and then taking that a step further, COLA this year is 5.9. And they're also raising the minimum wage cost by that 60 cent amount. So that's where I came up with these wage amounts, is I included COLA and the increase of minimum wage. Also weighing the fact that last year, the town chose to only give 1% to the employees. I'm going to shoot myself in the foot. I feel very strongly that we need to take care of our employees and wait in their rate. 1% last year, it's great that we could do something, but we need to do something this year to kind of make up for that as well. Times are tough, that's, they're tough for all the taxpayers, and I understand that. You know, if it means that the manager doesn't see any merit increase whatsoever this year, and that means that we can give some of these other folks increases, I'm happy with that. I just, I want to make sure we take care of our employees this year.
And I'm with you on that. Hiring people for less than what they're worth is hard enough. Keeping people for, keeping good employees that we already have is invaluable. And that's a good explanation. I just, it seems like, to me, and I don't remember how we got to 1% last year. Was that cut at town meeting?
No.
We just said because of COVID expenses.
Trying to keep it, if I remember correctly, and that's interruption, trying to keep expenses down. That was the purpose of it.
So it was 1% and no merit?
There's 1% in merit, but merit at the maximum is like 33 cents an hour.
So, I'm good with the budget. I think we're going to have, you know, you get down, so you get to the police department budget, that's an 11.9% change on regular. Now, I understand another contract, and they have a new contract coming, so that's, even that's a guess. I think we're going to have a hard sell because people are going to notice these lines coming. And as long as we can justify doing what we're doing, everybody sitting here knows who's going to bring it up. The people that will bring it up, and they want answers, and they're entitled to answers as to why, and that will be the answer.
And I am more than happy to discuss and go through anything people want to at town meeting. I am planning on, and one of the reasons that you see this so broken down and you even find all this material on the website, is that I want people to know what's in the budget. So, you know, whomever can click on our information and know, so these aren't made up numbers. This is how, where they came from. So anyways. All right.
No more questions?
Hi, Dan.
You ready? Make your motion.
Make a motion to approve the budget as presented. Thanks to the agents that have been successful.
Second.
Some of the same number that.
Any other discussion? Vote, hold paper. Vote. Vote.
Well, thank you very much, and I'll, I'll put all the updates together and send them to everybody so that everybody has that. Hardened.
Thanks, Adam, and I just want to say this, I think this is incredibly efficient.
Oh, well, thank you.
Classes combining, hopefully, select more people the same way.
I hope so. Thank you.
Are you going to state committee?
No. I give a politics. I give a politics.
Oh.
Leave for Jared.
The one discuss. Your email.
Can we do a quick intercession session?
Well, Sheriff said so we can do it. We didn't post it, but.
I think it's an emergency.
Yeah. So we need to make a motion to do that.
So I have to make a motion that you're going to second session. Statute of this for second session. With David? Thank you.
Take care of it, everybody. We'll take care of this. Thank you, guys, very much, Mr. Chair.
A pleasure. Had a hard year.